I'll talk to Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. This is Ben Shire, Mayor of Fergus Falls, and thanks for joining us tonight for this public meeting regarding the proposed solar project from Otter Tail Power. Just a little bit, I'm going to introduce Brian Uvaro here, City Engineer, to go over kind of some of the ground rules for tonight, what we expect, but just wanted to welcome everyone and just say that tonight's going to be an opportunity for people to provide input. If there are some questions, some general questions, maybe they could be answered, but it's mostly just for a public comment to provide input into the project as we go through the EAW process. And then at 5:30, Otter Tail Power will be making a brief 15-minute presentation, and then there'll be another opportunity for the public to comment after that. So again, welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us. I guess right now, I'll turn it over to our City Engineer, Brian Uvaro, just to kind of talk about the process of tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, today is Tuesday, December 8th, 2020. This is the public hearing for environmental assessment worksheet for the Hoot Lake Solar Project. This meeting is scheduled to go from 5:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Representatives from the city, along with Otter Tail Power and their consultant, HDR, here to gather input in regards to this process. To begin with, I want to go over just a few things, more so housekeeping items. As noted, this meeting is scheduled from 5:00 to 6:30 PM, and official presentation will begin at 5:30 PM, so in consideration of everybody's time, we have to maintain the schedule. As noted too, this meeting is through a virtual platform via Zoom. To maintain functionality, if you desire to provide any comments, please raise your hand. There's an icon on the lower right-hand corner of the screen. You will be called upon when requested, so we can get everybody's input. We like to maintain, we prefer to keep the comments within five-minute duration, so other people have an opportunity to provide comments. Also noted in the presentation, it's scheduled till 6:30 PM. However, we understand, there will be some people wanting, requesting to provide more comments. We must stress, all comments should be in writing and should be submitted through the email address referred to as hootlakesolar@ci.fergus-falls.mn.us. Directions, the same address will be presented in the PowerPoint presentation beginning at 5:30 as well. But the other avenue to submit comments is to myself, Brian Uvaro, at City Hall, directions, attention, Brian Uvaro, at Fergus Falls City Hall. So at this time, we are going to turn it over and just start the comment period. Please note, once again, at 5:30 PM, we are going to start the presentation. Upon the completion of the presentation, we will open it up to additional comments. So at this time, we will see if there's any available comments. Yeah, as mentioned, if you have any comments, please use your icon to raise your hand, so we can unmute you, so you have the ability to be heard. Also, just in addition, if you cannot find that icon, please unmute your mic. Yes, we do have one, from Katie Tisdal, so go ahead, Katie.
Hi, yes, thank you, this is Katie Tisdal. I was wondering, has there been any discussion at the city level to update your solar ordinances to align with best practices?
Yeah, good evening, this is Andrew Bremse, City Administrator. We were just looking at each other here in the room to see who wanted to answer the question. We do have our City Planner, Darren Welly, who is doing research on that ordinance and other cities and county ordinances as it relates to solar development projects like this, or solar farms. And that work is ongoing, but certainly is underway. We've learned a lot as we've researched some of these things, we've had a lot of conversations with other folks as it relates to these types of ordinances, and I can't definitively say that there's changes that we've identified that have to be made, or that will be made, but I can say with certainty that we're looking at several different examples, some that have been provided to us by interested parties related to this project, and also from other communities who have gone through similar processes. So Darren's not here this evening to share what, you know, type of examples he's found, or where he's going with that, but I'm confident that he'll come back with recommendations, if he has any, to update the ordinance as it relates to this project that would satisfy some of the concerns and comments that we've heard from the neighborhood.
Thank you, and would a conditional use permit be part of that update to the ordinances? Has that been talked about?
Yes, this is Andrew Bremsef. Again, it has been talked about, it has not been decided if that is the best or appropriate route to move with our ordinances as it relates to solar farms. That decision has not been made, but it's certainly been discussions that we've had here at City Hall.
Yeah, this is Troy Tisdal, and following that same question, I'm wondering, at the last EAW conversation, there were concerns from the City Council about fencing and pollinator grass and the appearance of this thing from Highway 210, and I think that, you know, that's not, that's what ordinances do. So if those concerns are held by the City Council, you know, they can be required, and they should be required. This shouldn't be just left to goodwill to Otter Tail Power to do it in the way they want.
Yeah, I don't know if that's a question or a statement, but I guess I'll respond to it. What I would say is, I've talked to, this is Andrew again, I've talked to multiple City Council members over the last three to four weeks since that meeting was held, and many of them wanted to attend this evening's conversation to hear questions, comments, and concerns from neighbors, residents, and Otter Tail Power, to see how things are shaking out before they wanted to have additional dialogue about that. So I think this is a good opportunity tonight.
And if I can add, this is Brian from the city, too. The PowerPoint presentation at 5:30 here has been enhanced since its initial presentation to the City Council, and some of the enhancements was to some proposed alternatives to fencing that is part of the conversation to be had. Next comment we have is from Barbara. Please unmute your mic.
Hi, I'm just wondering, without any ordinances in place, what is to hold Otter Tail Power? I mean, I hear a lot of "we could," or "maybes," or, you know, there's nothing definitive here. What's to hold them to whatever terms they say they're going to adhere to? I mean, are they going to put up a chain-link fence, or not a chain-link fence, or, I just would like something more concrete to say, this is what they have to do.
Yeah, thank you for the question and the comment. This is Andrew again. It would be inaccurate to say there's not solar ordinances for the city of Fergus Falls. Now, you could easily argue they're inadequate, or they aren't as in-depth as they should be, and I've heard a lot of folks say that. But there are ordinances in place within the city of Fergus Falls. The ordinances do address solar farms as an allowable use in an agricultural-zoned property. In this case, this property will be zoned agricultural when it is annexed into the city. That's the way the code of the city of Fergus Falls reads, and if the ordinances remain unchanged and they stay in their current state, Otter Tail Power would be required to meet the ordinances and the intent of the ordinances, including the setbacks, which, again, you could argue are less than what they probably should be, and whatnot. But anyway, the ordinance, as it's written today, would have to be followed by Otter Tail Power before they could receive building permits or any other approvals from the city, if the ordinance remained unchanged. Now, if the ordinance is changed by the City Council, or if it is changed, then they'll have to meet whatever those changes to the ordinance would be. Now, if Otter Tail Power had made an agreement with the city, or put conditions on the project outside of the ordinances, they certainly have the ability to do that, and, you know, could hold themselves to standards that are more restrictive than the ordinance as written, but there would be nothing that the city could do to require that. So, long story short, there are ordinances, some could argue, and I know some on this call will argue, that they're not adequate.
Can I just follow up on that?
Certainly.
What, you know, I hear all this about annexation, but what, how does the city of Fergus Falls have jurisdiction over land that is not theirs yet? And we know annexation could take a while. So how does the city of Fergus Falls have the authority for that?
Yeah, thanks, that's a great question. The project isn't going to be permitted or built until the property would be under the jurisdiction of the city of Fergus Falls, so those things wouldn't be signed off on until the property was in the city limits and the city had jurisdiction over them. Now, the city was appointed as the responsible government unit, or the RGU, for the EAW process, for a couple of reasons. One, because it's anticipated that the entirety of the project will be within the city, or that's the intent of Otter Tail Power. And two, Otter Tail County also agreed and basically affirmed that the city of Fergus Falls is the appropriate RGU, and were willing to grant that authority to the city of Fergus Falls.
Well, they're talking about building in 2021 and finishing in 2022, so you're talking about annexation being complete before, at some time in 2021, before they start construction?
That would be the intent of Otter Tail Power to petition the City Council for annexation early in 2021, when the EAW process is complete. And I certainly can't speak on behalf of Otter Tail Power, so maybe I'll let them confirm that.
Sure, thanks, Andrew. This is Mark Tomma, Manager of Environmental Services for Otter Tail Power Company. I'll certainly do my best to answer any questions this evening, or general questions. Unfortunately, our technical lead wasn't able to be here tonight, so just, you know, echoing what Brian said, encourage everyone, you know, not only to, you know, verbally ask questions, but please, you know, form those into comments, questions, concerns, and submit them as part of the formal EAW process. But just, yes, just to take on to what Andrew said, you know, our intent would be to submit a petition to the city in early 2021, and actually, that can't be finalized per Minnesota rules until after EAW, the environmental assessment worksheet process is finished. So that's part of the timing there. And certainly, as it relates to the Minnesota model solar ordinance, our intent is to follow many aspects of that ordinance, you know, related to project setbacks, which are more extensive than what's in the city ordinance, and less specifically approved by an individual homeowner. You know, other aspects in terms of panel height, anti-reflective coating, wildlife-friendly fencing, so, you know, those are described in the EAW, you know, and certainly, you know, anything that we describe in the EAW, anything that comes in with comments that the city has to respond to, and reaches back out to Otter Tail in terms of, you know, reflecting changes. You know, this is our hometown, this is our headquarters, we certainly plan to stand up and, you know, honor any of those project, you know, aspects, if you will, that are described.
Hi, my name is Blaine Buset, and I'm just wondering why the city would annex this property? I mean, what's the purpose, and what's the gain from it, and the outcome?
Sure, that's, excuse me, that's a good question. The number one, I guess, benefit of the city annexing the property would be the property tax increase, or the tax base increase as a result of this. Otter Tail Power may speak about this in their presentation, but I will say that this type of use, like a solar farm, is taxed based on the generation that it produces, so this would be a way to help offset the loss of tax base the city's going to see with the closure and decommissioning of the Hoot Lake Power Plant.
That's correct, Andrew. While not part of the presentation, I confirm, right, that solar projects are subject to a production tax, in lieu of property tax in Minnesota.
I have another question as well, this is Blaine Buset again. How do they annex it? I mean, what's the process? I mean, where are they annexing it from? Anex it from Ardal, from Buset? I mean, from the county, from the state?
Yeah, that's a good question, I'll take that one as well. So Otter Tail Power will have to file a petition for annexation to the city of Fergus Falls. There will be a separate petition for each of the townships. There's two different townships that are, that touch the boundaries of this project. And essentially, because it will be 100% petitioned and only impacting property that Otter Tail Power owns, they have the ability to simply ask for that to take place. The city can grant that request of the petition, and then ultimately, it goes to the Office of Administrative Hearings down at the State of Minnesota, and an administrative law judge basically signs off on that and reviews the petition to ensure completeness and accuracy, and that's really the extent. It's kind of a straightforward process when the property owner themselves are the ones petitioning for annexation.
Next one, we got, let me just remind, we have about 10 minutes prior to the public hearing, excuse me, the public presentation. Next comment is from Dave Schroeder. So if you could unmute your mic, Dave?
Yep, thank you. So I don't know that, this is more of probably a comment than a question. I wonder sometimes if a 20% replacement of tax revenue is somewhat short-sighted, and I know that Otter Tail Power already owns that property, but it seems like the tax revenue to the city would be much greater if that was developed, actually, versus agricultural. So, I just, that's my only, my question in the back of my mind. It seems like there would be, it's not the highest best use of the property, but I could be wrong, so I'll wait, I'll take, I'll mute.
Thank you for the comment. Next comment is from Barbara, again. Barbara, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, I just have a question. I mean, there's several houses that are either bordering, or some are, I think, encompassed by the solar farm. What happens to those properties? I mean, their values will be affected, their use will be affected. What do the owners of those properties do?
Again, this is Mark Tomma with Otter Tail. Certainly, so for those instances, we have, you know, individually reached out to each one of those owners, and, you know, have had those discussions, you know. Certainly, you know, those are some private conversations and unique to each owner, so won't be able to go into detail, but no, absolutely, we are visiting with everyone, and if you haven't felt like you've been contacted, or would like to be contacted again, please, you know, reach out to us, and, you know, we want to strike up those conversations. You know, but again, in terms of annexation, Otter Tail will just be submitting, you know, an application to annex the Otter Tail Power property.
Okay, next comment from Katie, please unmute your mic.
Sorry, I can't use my hand with this. This is Terry Buset, I have a question. Concerned about the ash impound that is relatively close to my house, and that will be continued to be monitored, or are we expecting that to affect the groundwater? If we can touch upon that.
Sure, yep, certainly, yep, thank you for the question. So that landfill is associated with the operation of the Hoot Lake Plant coal-fired unit there. And so that's, that will be closed within a few years of closure, decommissioning, demolition of the Hoot Lake Plant facility, so that process will begin in mid-2021, and then extend for a period of time through that decommissioning and demolition. So that landfill then, at that point, will be closed in accordance with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency guidelines. So the active area currently has a base synthetic liner, it'll also have a top liner and cover to meet those Minnesota standards. And then, yes, there is extensive groundwater monitoring around that facility, and that is required to remain in place for at least 30 years post-closure. So, you know, for instance, if it was closed in 2025, we would have to monitor that for at least another 30 years. Thank you for the question.
Okay, next question, back to Katie Tisdal. Please unmute your mic.
Yeah, this is Troy Tisdal. Our property borders the solar farm on the east edge, and we've had Otter Tail Power employees actually tell us that we might be in the worst position, yet the EAW doesn't even mention our home or any impact on it. Does that make the EAW incomplete, that it doesn't address the impact on the homeowners?
This is Mike Mayer. So the EAW is pretty prescriptive in terms of what questions are expected to be addressed during the process. And so, you know, the number of questions that we go into are on the website, on the project site, but basically, there's 19, I believe, 19 total questions that the Environmental Quality Board has put together in order to analyze that. And so, you're right, there's really no kind of socioeconomic piece in an EAW for us to be able to answer, in terms of those things, versus where an EIS would have some of that as well, with some more socioeconomic analysis.
And this is Katie, just a follow-up question to that ash pit area. Those existing rows of pine trees and bushes, is there a way to have the city, for Otter Tail Power, to at least keep those existing trees and bushes? I assume they're planted for screening of those ash impounds? So just to put that out there, for those bordering that, at least that would help their view shed a little bit.
Thanks for that comment, certainly, you know, encourage you to submit that, and we'll be, you know, looking for ways in terms of, you know, visual screenings, whether it's those trees, or potentially some pollinator mixes. You know, again, in terms of where the final fence will be installed versus those trees, or something, we have to take a look at, but appreciate the comment.
Did the EAW mention some unlined ash pits that were discovered on that? And if so, are they being dealt with?
Just give us a second, we're just going to try and identify the area of the EAW that you mentioned there.
While they're looking for that, there's a lot of folks who have been joining us. Just a reminder, at 5:30, so about three minutes from now, there's going to be a formal PowerPoint presentation by Otter Tail Power, and when that is concluded, there'll be opportunities to continue to ask questions, provide comments, or give feedback. So stick with us here, they're going to answer this question, and then we'll transition shortly into the formal presentation.
So the EAW, in terms of looking at contamination and hazardous materials, evaluated for property Phase 1 ESAs, or environmental site assessments, that are intended to identify contaminated areas, or potential areas where there is contamination. Those were the parcels Otter Tail acquired, and then the parcels Otter Tail currently owns were also considered based on the documents that they provided. And so if there's additional information that you have related to recently discovered or otherwise identified that weren't discussed in the EAW, I would really suggest submitting that as a comment, so we can further investigate it and make sure the EAW is as complete as possible before finalizing.
Yeah, and certainly, not sure if I'm looking at the exact spot in the EAW that you might be referencing, but it was part of the advanced preparation for the decommissioning and demolition of the Hoot Lake Coal Fire Power Plant, we did conduct an environmental site assessment, it's called a Phase 2 assessment, where we do some subsurface investigation, and identified a couple small areas that we will be, you know, remediating as part of that process. So I hope that answers your questions, and if not, please, again, as Mike indicated, submit that comment.
And if you have the EAW available, our discussion of it is on page 20. 19 and 20.
Okay, the next question we have, probably prior to the presentation, is from Athane. So Athane, please unmute your mic, we have a few minutes to speak before we begin the PowerPoint presentation.
Hi there, thank you for putting this on. I came a few minutes late, so I apologize if I missed some of these answers. I'm going to ask one question, and I'll wait for your response, and I'll follow up, but what's the overall goal of this meeting right now? Is this a Q and A, or informative, or I'll mute and let you answer?
Yes, Athane, this is Brian. The overall goal, number one, is just to get comments. We're here to collect information to hear, it's a public hearing. This is not required per Minnesota statute, however, the City Council, being the RGU for this project, like similar projects in the past, we typically have this public hearing. So like you said, we are here to gather comments, not generally a question and answer. We, per the EQB, we need written comments, but we're just here, like I said, to harbor comments. So at this time, not to cut you off, we will open it up once again after the PowerPoint presentation, but in considerations of people's times, it's now 5:30. So if you could hold tight, we're going to begin the PowerPoint presentation conducted by Otter Tail Power. to begin the PowerPoint presentation conducted by Otter Tail Power and HDR.
Well, thanks, Brian. Again, this is Mark Toma. I am manager of environmental services for Otter Tail Power Company. And I'm going to provide a bit of a project overview in the first handful of slides, and then I'll turn it over to Mike Mayer from HDR Engineering to provide more details on the environmental assessment process. So I'm certainly really excited to be able to provide an overview of Otter Tail Power Company's investment in this local clean renewable energy. We know our customers depend on reliable, affordable electricity, and adding this solar project is key to having a diverse mix of energy resources to help maintain this reliable, affordable service for years to come. So moving to the next slide, some just high-level statistics, if you will. The project is designed to be 49.9 megawatts in size. That equates to approximately 150,000 solar panels. And preliminarily, these panels are roughly three and a half feet by seven feet in dimensions. And from an overall perspective, these panels can be expected to provide enough electricity to power 10,000 homes. Moving to Slide 3. So this project is really part of Otter Tail Power's most recent resource plan. The Minnesota Public Utilities Commission directed Otter Tail Power to complete a competitive bidding process to procure approximately 30 megawatts or more of solar. And along those same lines, the Minnesota Legislature has established a solar energy standard, requiring public utilities to obtain at least 1.5% of their total Minnesota retail sales from solar energy, with a goal of obtaining 10% by the year 2030. Once this project is fully operational, Hoot Lake Solar will provide approximately 4% of our Minnesota customer retail sales. And from a total Otter Tail system look, with the completion of Hoot Lake Solar, we're projecting more than 35% of our energy will come from renewable resources. Next slide. In terms of project location, we have a more detailed map coming up in a couple of slides, also available on the project website. But as a general description, it is located near the existing Hoot Lake Coal Fired Power Plant. And as already discussed in some of the preliminary Q and A, it's partially within the city of Fergus Falls and partially within Otter Tail County. Otter Tail Power does intend to petition the city to annex the portion currently in the county. Again, just the Otter Tail Power Company property. But as a matter of process, that cannot be completed until after the environmental assessment worksheet review is finished. So moving to the next slide. This zeroes in more on why we are planning to develop the project where we are. And a key driving factor is that we have a really unique opportunity to reuse the existing substation at the Hoot Lake Coal Fired Plant, which we will be retiring in May of 2021. And so that substation is essential for connecting the electricity produced by Hoot Lake Solar to the energy grid for our customers. This map also highlights the location and types of Otter Tail's other set of generating resources. Perhaps we'll just highlight a couple, including the Merricourt Wind Energy Center in North Dakota. That'll be approximately 150-megawatt facility, and the approximate 250-megawatt Astoria Station Natural Gas Peaking Plant in South Dakota. Both of those facilities are nearing the completion of construction and scheduled to come online in the very near future. And finally, my last slide, before turning it over to Mike Mayer, is the slide that is likely of greatest interest in terms of the exact location of the solar farm. So the project area is between the Otter Tail River on the north and Highway 210 on the south, bisected by Main Street. And for reference, the Hoot Lake Plant, the coal-fired facility is in the upper left-hand corner. So note that the pink shaded area represents solar panels, and kind of that dash pink line is the fence that would run around the entire perimeter. Now, again, that fence line is not necessarily exactly final and could slightly change. And as I mentioned previously, we intend to follow the model Minnesota solar ordinance related to panel setbacks from homes unless a shorter distance is approved by a homeowner. So with that project overview, I'll turn the presentation over to Mike Mayer with HDR to get into more detail regarding the environmental assessment for the project.
Great. Thanks, Mark. My name is Mike Mayer. I'm the environmental lead with HDR, supporting the development of this EAW with the city of Fergus Falls, working with Otter Tail Power. So a little bit of background in terms of what is an EAW. The Minnesota Environmental Policy Act, or MEPA, requires state agencies and local responsible government units, or RGUs, as has been mentioned before, the acronym, to consider the impacts of government actions on the environment. The EAW is not meant to approve or deny a project, but provide information to guide other approvals, like other permits that the city may need to issue for the project. For this project, the proposers, Otter Tail Power, and they provided all the necessary information to the RGU, and the EAW is completed by the RGU, supported by HDR, in order to meet the Minnesota rules. So in EAW, there's two types of documents primarily that MEPA can require. One is an EAW, an environmental assessment worksheet, and one is an environmental impact statement. With certain projects, an environmental assessment worksheet is required. And basically, it's a document that describes the features of the project in order to determine whether or not environmental impact statement is necessary. It also provides permit information as to what permits each project would need to get, informs the public about the project, and allows for the public to be able to comment on the project, and helps identify ways to protect or minimize impacts to the environment. So a little bit more specifically. Nope, that's good. Sorry. The administrative rules, Minnesota administrative rules, have certain types of projects that require mandatory EAWs to be prepared, certain that require mandatory EISs to be prepared. This falls under one of the mandatory EAW categories. And so the Section 4410, 4300, Subpart 3 indicates that for any proposed electric power generating plant that's going to generate more than 25 megawatts but under 50 megawatts, and which an air permit's not needed, such as a solar facility, that it's a mandatory EAW, and the RGU is the local government unit. And as Andrew mentioned before, early on, there's the potential for two RGUs. One is the city of Fergus Falls, and one is the Otter Tail County. And so discussions early on in this process between the city and the county, in terms of who might have the greatest jurisdiction or greatest responsibility for approving the project at the time of permitting, it was determined that the city would have more of that responsibility. And so the county passed a resolution on September 22 of this year in support of the city being the RGU. And they are still being briefed and reviewing this document as well. So like I mentioned earlier to one of the questions that was asked, the EAW is fairly prescriptive in terms of the types of resources that are required to be analyzed. And this list here provides that those questions that need to be addressed. And the EAW form that is filled out has specific questions on what information is necessary in order to answer the questions posed. And so the resources range from land use to fish and wildlife, contamination, historic properties, visual noise, as well as cumulative potential effects. So the effects that other projects, when combined with this project, could have on those resources. So we made a presentation to the city council on the draft EAW. And from those conversations that we had, we developed a couple more slides in order to talk about some of the things that they raised, and some of the things that we thought was important to convey to the public. And this analysis can be found within the EAW itself, under the specific topics. So when we looked at some of the different impacts, and some of the design criteria that were used to avoid impacts, one of them was wetlands. And so, as you can tell from the earlier map of the project, the area has a number of wetlands within it. However, from designing setbacks around those wetlands, the project will be able to avoid everything except for 0.06 acres of impacts to those wetlands. And that 0.06 acres of impacts is related to access road. The project would also include sediment basins in order to manage stormwater events during construction to avoid further impact to water resources. In terms of wildlife, the project would limit tree clearing activities to only periods outside bird nesting and bat pup rearing periods. Preferences also for the perimeter fence, we talk in the EAW about a couple different options. We've done some additional research in terms of what would be allowable, and the preference is to use a woven wire fence, which will allow for movement of smaller species compared to more of a chain link fence process. And as practical, the intent is to follow DNR's Prairie Establishment and Maintenance Technical Guidance for solar projects, where areas would be replanted with pollinator-friendly native plants. And these would be targeted around the perimeter fence, and could be up to about 16 acres, which would also provide some visual screening as well for the project, and provide cover and forage for other wildlife species, especially smaller ones. So three of the other categories that we thought were important to talk about that came up were visual, transportation, and noise. And so from a visual perspective, the preference is to use the woven wire deer fence. And the image here is the type of fence that would be used. It's the type of woven wire fence. The only distinction is that there would likely be an angle iron from the top with three smooth wires to further limit restricted access. And revegetation, like I mentioned earlier, especially along the perimeter fence with native plants, would also help further those visual impacts. In terms of transportation, one of the concerns that we heard during the council meeting was traffic along Main Street, construction-related traffic along Main Street portion of the project. And so one way we worked to try to avoid taking trucks, construction-related vehicles through more residential areas, was to develop an access plan to use Highway 210 along the project, and that they would access Main Street by using 229th Avenue. The EAW talks about total vehicle trips, and what it does not necessarily talk about is where those vehicles would necessarily go. And so some vehicles and some equipment would stop on 210 in order to access the southern portion of the project site, whereas other vehicles would go up 229th Avenue in order to access the northern portion of the site. And Otter Tail would coordinate with the city on dust abatement and road maintenance and other upgrades as necessary. In terms of noise, the project would adhere to the construction noise limits in the city ordinance, Section 90.23, which lays out the hours of construction noise. Also, operational noise would be limited, really to the solar panels, tracking system resetting. So these types of solar panels will move with the sun, and then at the end of the day, will reset. And so that is one of the noises that it'll generate, is that resetting. So in terms of, and again, I didn't focus on every single topic we talked about in the EAW, but some of the ones that we heard, comments from the council on, I wanted to make sure we touched on tonight. I do encourage you to take a look at the document if you're interested in other aspects of the environmental issues that may need to be addressed. In terms of the EAW process, so on November 16, the city made a completeness determination and approved the EAW for publication. We submitted on November 20 the notice of EAW to the EQB Monitor, and also distributed it out to other interested parties as required by the Minnesota administrative rules. The EQB Monitor published that notice on November 30, which kicks off the 30-day public comment period. So the comment period will run from November 30 to December 30. Tonight is our December 8 public hearing. After the hearing, when the comment period ends, we'll take a look at all the written comments that have been submitted, and analyze those, and address them through the refinement of the EAW and the findings of fact, and a determination of whether or not an EIS is needed, which would be the next step. And then depending on that step, the city council would approve the finding of facts, and/or the EIS decision, whether one would be needed or one would not be needed. And then that notice of decision would be published again. If a negative EIS declaration is determined, so an EIS is not required, then the project would move into project permitting. So in terms of overall schedule, we're looking at the winter 2021 for the EAW being complete, moving on to annexing the unincorporated parcels of the project. There will be a petition of a right-of-way abandonment within the project area on the parcel. And then looking to spring/summer 2021 to initiate permitting. In the EAW upfront, there is a list of potential permits that may be required. It is number eight in the EAW on Page 5 and 6. And so that'll give you an understanding of the different types of permits that the project will have to obtain in order to move forward with construction. And so based on permitting and timing, as well as some other factors related to bringing on a developer builder, the construction period is still to be determined. But the permitting period expects to end sometime late summer 2021. So in terms of review and comment of the EAW, so in order to find it, we have it posted. There's a link posted on the city's webpage. And you just go under the city spotlight heading, and there's a Hoot Lake Solar Project link. That'll take you to the project site. On the project site, you'll find copies of the EAW and supporting documents, as well as this PowerPoint presentation, in case you have any questions that come up after the meeting's over and want to review the PowerPoint presentation that we provided. In order to comment, like Brian had mentioned earlier, please email the Hoot Lake Solar website, our email address that's listed on the presentation, or you can address hard copy letters to Brian using that address there. We need to receive all comments by December 30, 2020, to make sure that we are able to incorporate and consider all of them. So thanks for your time. That's the presentation. Maybe we can go back just one slide so we can leave that up for folks. Let me have a double tap. It's animation. There you go. So we'll leave this up for folks so that they can copy down any information that they need. Again, if you go to the website and go to the link to the project, all the information is there as well.
Thank you, Mike. That officially concludes the presentation by representatives from Otter Tail Power and HDR. So at this time, we're going to turn it back over to the attendees right now. Once again, if you desire to ask, please raise your hand or unmute your mic. I believe everything's been going quite well. People have been comments thus far. So at this time, this presentation concludes, or excuse me, the public hearing at 6:30. So we have approximately 40 missed to the So we have approximately 40 missed to this conclusion. So at this time, please raise your hand.
Hi, I'm Terry Busev. I have a question. Wondering about if the fencing will be monitored for trap wildlife, whether the fence, whether they're stuck in the fence or trying to get off that property?
You know, thanks for that, that question. Not sure we've, you know, fully got into that level of detail, so please incorporate that into the, your comments to submit. You know, I do want to reiterate that there will not be any barbed wire at the top of this fence. And so, you know, in terms of the woven wire with the smooth strands at top, you know, in order to look like a deer fencing. And certainly, you know, we're also looking for feedback. You know, one option on a fencing too is to have, you know, an open area kind of at the bottom of the fencing to allow the, the critters, if you will, to, to move in and out. So those are all ideas that we're contemplating and look forward to any of your feedback.
Next, next comment we have is from Barbara. Barbara, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi. In the presentation, Otter Tail Power said they were going to use 229th to access East Mount Faith or Main Street. There's a long history between the Birchwood Estates residence and that road. It was paved at one point and the sub base was not sufficient and it was breaking up. And Dane Prairie, which is that, that section of, from 210 to Birchwood Estates is Dane Prairie, and they returned it to gravel. And it's finally in decent shape. So my concern is this heavy equipment going back and forth over it. Does Otter Tail Power have any intention of paving that section of road? And if so, who would that be assessed to? Because the agreement right now between Dane Prairie and Birchwood Estates is that the residents of Birchwood Estates would pay 50% of any improvements. So, you know, it's the wear and tear on that road that I'm concerned about.
Well, this is Brian with the City of Fergus. I can only answer certain components there. There has been some discussion about paving, but what we do know, yes, we've, we've talked about the haul routes, which is in the EAW. We've also discussed about some city routes too and designating official haul routes within the city to access the property from the west. But during operations, yes, at a minimum, there will be some coordination as far as maintaining the road for passable condition and actually restoring it to its existing condition. Yes, I'm aware, just aesthetically looking out there in some of the base, there are, there are some, it was brought up and yes, we're aware that the sub base may be unstable. So we would anticipate there will be some work with that road to maintain operation.
And you're, you're in discussion with Dane Prairie about that? Because that's not, that would not be part of the assessed property.
I think those conversations are forthcoming. Once again, we're just gathering public input right now through the permitting process and all of the city itself, and that we will be having those discussions with the adjacent jurisdictions.
Okay. And then I had another question on the noise. I mean, the panels themselves don't make noise, but they're directional, I believe, right? So the motors make noise and the cooling fans make noise. What distance do you have to be from these panels to not hear the noise?
Most, so most of the noise from a solar facility comes from the inverters, which are, it's the humming where the power is collected. And those are all sited interior to the, to the project site, which reduces the potential for noise to, to travel outside the project area. And we do have a noise analysis. Question 17, page 27 of the EAW, page 28, where we kind of talk about the different noise levels, whether it's during construction or during operations and kind of the distance and, and decibel levels at certain feet. And we, what we tried to do also is compare it to, you know, given some of the decibel, average decibel is not really helpful. So what we tried to do was compare it to more common things in terms of what it would sound like and when. And so I would, I would suggest take a look at that as well to get a better understanding of, of what the, what the different impacts from noise could be.
And do you also, when there is maintenance and work that needs to be done on this, you do it at night? If I, if I heard correctly, right? It's all done at night?
No, I don't expect that would be the case.
So they wouldn't be lighting it up and working on it at night?
Yeah, you know, right. Unless there's some type of, you know, extenuating circumstance, you know, that would, that would, that would not be the plan. Again, our technical lead unfortunately isn't able to answer that question here tonight. So please submit that and I'll, I'll take it back. But I don't think I'm going out on a limb to say that, that would not be our normal course to, you know, perform maintenance at night and, you know, have a bunch of lighting in place for that impact and, you know, unless there's a really unique circumstance.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Next, next response, I believe. Okay, I, we were, let's go back to Thane. We had to somewhat, so Thane, please unmute your mic.
Heather, yes. Thank you for taking some more comments. I just first had to express my opposition, I guess, to this project. I don't really feel like people have came out and said they are posing this project, but I am. I feel like it's already been discussed, like from the city perspective that this is happening and I, and I don't think that's appropriate. I think there needs to be more discussion to see how this will affect people. I originally reached out to the city of Fergus Falls, both planning commission and city council members to get perspective on how this will affect the development of Fergus Falls to the east. It was kind of troublesome because nobody really knew a thing about it. So, so I started paying attention and listening to these meetings. This will effectively cut off all development to the east of Fergus Falls. So somebody else previously expressed some concern about the development aspect. And so that's a primary concern of mine of how this will affect the city of Fergus Falls. And I understand why Otter Tail Power wants this here because it's very cheap for them. But just because it's cheap, a location doesn't mean it's a right location for the city of Fergus Falls and for the township and for the county.
Okay, Thane, thank you for your comment. Now I'd like to turn it over to Katie. Katie, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, and I'd like to echo what Thane said too. I, I just really think this is too much, too fast for a city that's inexperienced with solar. We've been told there's less than six solar farms this size in the entire state of Minnesota. So I just think we have to be really cautious and do our homework and, and learn lessons from other people that have developed more solar. One question I have is, it's been stated that you don't want to do pollinator friendly and native grasses underneath the solar panels. So what is going under the solar panels? Has that been determined?
The, the issue with underneath the solar panel is, so these solar panels are designed to also get energy reflected from the ground. And so there's a limitation in terms of the height of the plant that can be planted underneath the solar panels. In terms of, I think it's 12 inches is a limitation. So it's not that necessarily wouldn't be native seed, it would just be limited in terms of height and how it could, in terms of reducing potential energy.
So would it be turf grass instead of native prairie? Or gravel?
You know, so certainly it would be gravel. We'd be looking to, as Mike mentioned, have a native grass or planting, you know, the exact, you know, seed mix to be determined. Again, to the extent practical, we want to file, follow that DNR guidance and, you know, have input from others in terms of, of what that exact mix might be. But that hasn't been determined exactly up to this point.
Sure. And I'd just like to, so this project is about 450 acres and your presentation, you said you've identified about 16 acres for the pollinator friendly native plants. That's only about three and a half percent. I really think, you know, with the Prairie Wetlands Learning Center and, you know, being a tree city and all that, that's really a missed opportunity to have the dual purpose solar. So I just challenge you, you know, if it's, and there's plenty of examples in the state where those grasses have been planted under the panels. So I hope that you can look into that more and, and also consider doing that.
Yes, thank you, Katie.
Yeah, one more, one more question with the fence screening. What, what plans do you have for that as far as bushes and trees?
You know, that's, again, I don't have a lot of that level of detail on, you know, trees, if you will. You know, certainly, you know, in the area where the project is to be developed, there will be tree removal. But in terms of the screening along the perimeter, you know, that's something that I think we'd look forward to having, you know, individual conversations about, about that if that's an opportunity. Again, versus the, the pollinator friendly and, and just to kind of clarify, you know, the 16 acres, that was looking at those taller pollinator friendly plants along the perimeter and kind of hence the reason for that number. But again, I think we'd look forward to that, that comment and conversation.
Thanks, Katie. Let's turn it over to the next one, back to Thane. Thane, please unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you. I had another question regarding development on the east side of Fergus Falls. If the city had a take on what they foresee, a proper development strategy on the east side of Fergus Falls would be, you know, I, I wasn't able to get a clear answer. The planning commishy, what, planning commission wasn't able to get back to me regarding any plans. But fortunately, the, the UAW did discuss a Northeast River Reach, which was kind of interesting how the city did spend time thinking of a development plan for the east side of Fergus Falls. So it'd be interesting to see and hear how the city feels about this project going in and how it'll affect their development. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Thank you for the comment. Yes, just to, just to get a little bit of feedback about that, yes, we are aware of the Northeast River Reach. That is one of the comments internally that we are working on and just identifying some, some what's contained in that and how this project relates.
Hi, this is Terry Busev. I have a question about the grading of the land, the property that Otter Tail has. Is there any detailed information on that where we can see how much the, the land will
We do not have that level of deep detail to this point.
Is that something that the, let's see, the environment, the EAW would be interested in or it has to be posted in, in that document?
Sir, may I all turn it to Mike? Mike, could you talk a little bit about, you know, the overall construction stormwater management in terms of, you know, that obligation as would relate to grading or disturb acreage?
Sure. As, as the project gets closer into more of a final design, there'll be the development of a grading plan as well as coordination with the Pollution Control Agency as it relates to stormwater and, and stormwater pollution prevention. And so a number of permits will be, will have to be submitted as well as the associated plans with them. And so that'll really get into the detail of, of exactly where the slopes are, are in a way that we need sediment basins versus, you know, where slopes are, won't result in any stormwater issues. And so it's just, once that additional information is, is developed as we get towards a closer to a more of a final design, as Otter Tail gets closer to more of a final design, then those plans and, and permit applications will be developed for review.
Next, we got just a few, but I'm going to turn it over to Beth. Beth, please unmute your mic. Oh, excuse me, thank you. Barbara, Barbara, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, hi. So some of the things I, I know that solar is not economical, you know, the built, the panels are built from non-renewable materials. So it increases mining and, and there's all sorts of things. It's not, the mining's not necessarily done in this country and, I mean, not that Otter Tail Power has any control over this, but I'm just not a fan of solar at this point. But my question for Otter Tail Power is they have a 20-year lifespan on these panels. What is the plan when they expire? Because I've heard that in 20, by 2050, the expired panels will double a tonnage of current global plastic waste. So are we just kicking the can down the road and the environmental impact for our children and grandchildren? You know, it just doesn't make sense to me to do this.
You know, thanks.
So what is the, yeah, how do you get rid of these panels in 20 years is my question?
Sure. Thanks for the comment. So we're projecting that with the right maintenance and upkeep, we're expecting the panels and equipment to, to last approximately 35 years. You know, I'm not, not sure if that makes a difference overall in, in your questions because, you know, correct, at the end of a lifespan of any facility, you know, we're encountering that now with our demolition, upcoming demolition of the, the Hoot Lake Coal Fired Power Plant. You know, there is abatement and disposal that, that is required. And so, you know, at that time, we would have to, you know, determine the, the best and, you know, most environmentally friendly way to, to, to deal with that. You know, I think the, there's a lot of efforts, you know, taking place in terms of can these panels be recycled? From what I understand, it's, it's not there yet. And so, you know, in today's environment, a landfill is, is, you know, the most likely landing spot. But in 35 years, if, you know, the process develops, you know, hopefully there's, there's additional opportunities. But certainly these would have to be properly decommissioned and disposed at the end of their useful life.
Is there a plan in place for that or is it just, we'll see what happens at that point?
Yeah, no, thanks, thank you for the comment. You know, there is not a, currently a detailed plan in place for that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. This time, let's turn it back to Thane. Thane, please unmute your mic.
Yes, thank you again. Kind of another statement, perhaps a question, but besides the tax revenue for the, for city, city of Fergus Falls, I don't see any benefit for this plan. Last, last week during our meeting with Otter Tail Power, I want to thank you for them for putting that on. They, they did say that this is going to produce zero permanent jobs, zero. So again, besides city tax revenue, I don't see any benefit. And, and from my calculation, I mean, 20 to 30 houses being built along that river, that very nice property would fulfill that tax, tax hole that Otter Tail Power would be paying the city. I also want to discuss a little bit, I know, I'm sure policies have been spoken about setbacks, trees and whatnot. I would assume and I hope those are, are written down policies for somebody to be held accountable. I would hate to have a word that's spoken that's not followed up upon. And also regarding the boundaries, you know, Otter Tail Power, that property that they purchased is going to be annexed for city. Some of the houses will not be annexed, is my understanding. And it seemed from last week or two weeks ago, that city council meeting discussing a recycling center, that there wasn't being a whole lot of work done to protect those homeowners outside of the city. I don't know if anybody can speak to a meeting a few weeks ago regarding our new recycling center and some homeowners' concerns regarding tree planting because they didn't want to look at it. And it seemed like that was discussed, but ultimately it was decided not to implement, implement that. So that's another concern that I have if this plan should be approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Thane. Now let's turn it over to Katie. Katie, please unmute your mic.
Yeah, this is, this is Troy. It's his dog.
It's his dog. And I agree with Thane and I hope that the city takes a hard look at this location as to whether or not this is the right spot for the future of Fergus. The other thing that I want to just address with the council is the idea that Otter Tail Power is considering wildlife-friendly fencing is something that ordinances would require. So I want to, Andrew Bremsef, if the ordinances are not inadequate, what I'm curious about is were they written for a project? When did you know about this solar farm? And were they written in anticipation of a solar farm this big? Or is this something that they really are not prepared for?
Yeah, I guess I don't recall saying that the ordinances are adequate. I said that some would argue that they are and some would argue that they're not. And we continue to look at that. We certainly haven't done any changes to the city's ordinances since knowing about this project. And I would say the city was made aware of this project probably March or April of this year when we started preliminary discussions with Otter Tail Power about what these processes might look like, including the EAW and the potential for annexation.
And then just to follow up on what Thane was saying about the recycling center and the screening, I would say that the city didn't seem to have a lot of concern for neighboring properties outside city limits. So what does that mean for us bordering this thing? Is the city going to change their opinion on that and ask Otter Tail to screen this thing appropriately, being they're going to be the governing body of this thing? Or are we just, again, at the mercy to negotiate with Otter Tail ourselves? So that's to the council.
Thank you for that. I, there's no city council members in the room, so I certainly couldn't answer for them. And, you know, I don't want to go in the weeds on the other project, but there were certainly council members that were advocating for multiple sides of that issue. And ultimately, half of that project is going to be developed. And the activity being over 1,000 feet away from the nearest home, there was conversations had by the city council to potentially consider screening when the property owner would have to come back for additional conditional use on the part of the property closest to the home. So that's unrelated to this project, but I would say that there was consideration given. You may not agree with the conclusion, but I thought there was good discussion had by the council in that regard.
Please, let's go back to Thane. Thane, could you please unmute your mic?
Yes, thank you again. This perhaps is a question for anybody that's involved in the city, but what would the city's take on the benefits of this project be? How much tax revenue are we looking at? In comparison, how many, how many just per se homes would need to be built in this area to make up for that tax revenue? Because again, this is a massive project and I just want to say that my original interest in this project was because I didn't want to have to look at it every time I drove into Fergus Falls. I didn't want to have to look at 500 acres of ugly solar panels. And obviously, some concerns are growing beyond the aesthetics. This is going to affect people's homes and lives and certainly affect the city. So back to the original question is what is the benefit for the city? Thank you.
Yes, Thane, that's a good question. You know, that's the current process where we have with the EAW, all these comments we received, which are really good and everything, that's a comment that, yes, we will have to have with the city council and they're going to have to direct us and see how they want to go in regards to that aspect. So if my eyes are serving me, we approximately have about 15 minutes left for this public hearing. So we're going to try to find, let's go to Justin Arneson. Justin, please unmute your mic, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
All right, thanks. And appreciate all the comments and I don't want to steal the thunder for tonight in the meeting, but you guys have a lot of good comments. I guess I just wanted to share, we keep bringing up the idea of revenue for the city and developing this property. And I want to make sure, a couple of things, the city of Fergus Falls doesn't own the property. And I know we could acquire it potentially for a price. The city of Fergus Falls also does not have infrastructure out that far. And I think although the comments are certainly things to consider, I mean, we'd be talking about some serious cost just to acquire the property and get infrastructure there for somebody to potentially build a home. So I mean, there's more that goes into it than just the idea of tax revenue for somebody to build a home that currently is outside the city limits. So that's just my comment, I guess. But I certainly appreciate all the comments tonight and that's what this meeting's all about is to get input from you, the residents, and the concerns and trying to find a way forward. Thanks.
Do we have Dave Schroeder? Did you have, please unmute your mic, please?
Yeah, just Mr. Arneson kind of addressed it a little bit. And so I was, at the risk of being redundant, I was going to ask something similar, which Justin effectively pretty well answered. And my main concern is just, you know, what Justin said is, yeah, it's kind of a development area. And I do, I do feel that, again, this is not the highest and best use of that property. But, and I don't know, so is there, has anybody explored, I mean, I know that Otter Tail Power owns that and they have the right somewhat to do that. I mean, what they wish. But 20% of revenue replacement from the Hoot Lake plant really kind of dwarfs potential revenue, I would think, from taxes. But again, I can't speak through the infrastructure issue. I don't know, I don't know how much that actually does cost, but it seems like a waste of really great river and property on that side of town. Thank you.
Thank you, David. We have a little bit over 10 minutes left. If there's anybody else wishing to provide comments, please let us know. Currently, yes, written comments, but for this public hearing, excuse me, for this public hearing, we have about 10 minutes left. Barbara, please unmute your mic.
Yes, hi. Okay. Hi, I'm just curious, I mean, so the property that Otter Tail Power has, whatever, 500 acres, they're going to put in for annexation and they're the only ones, and I heard during this meeting that they're not going to annex anything beyond that, right? So what's the city's plan long-term? Will you continue annexation further out? Will you be on that line? Or, you know, would you ever get to Birchwood? Would you plan on annexing Birchwood?
Yeah, I guess I don't know how to answer that. We have not talked about that at all. We would not have the ability to annex Birchwood the way it sits today. If, you know, if property owners wish to be part of the city and they're contiguous, they could always petition that. But the challenge with annexing property that far away from the city is kind of like Justin Arneson or Councilmember Arneson just indicated is if those particular homeowners wish to have city utilities, the cost to extend utilities that far from where they currently are would be exorbitant and would never be covered by the tax revenue that the city would see from property taxes from those neighborhoods. So I, you know, nothing definitive. I can't answer that question because it's never been talked about, but that's, that I would say is well beyond the scope of anything we've discussed at the city level.
Okay, thank you. Just curious if there was any discussion. All right, thank you.
No problem.
You're welcome. We have about 10 minutes left. I just want to remind you, refer to the screen about submitting written comments via email, hootlakesolar@ci.fergusfals.mn.us or to myself via US mail, bryonyvaro@fergusfallcityhall. So like I noted, we have about 10 minutes left. Yes, Katie, go ahead. Please unmute your mic.
Yeah, so I remember reading about the decibels for the inverters, however, nothing about when the panels all reset. So you have 150,000 panels resetting, do they all reset at the same time? And then as far as decibels and a comparison to, you know, kind of the real world, what kind of noise is that? Would it be heard all the way to Birchwood or what is that impact? Thank you. Because I don't remember seeing that in the EAW.
Mike's checking to see if there is anything on that in the EAW. And if not, I definitely appreciate the comment and that's definitely something that, go ahead and submit, but we'll, I'll get that down as well and make sure we address that question.
Yeah, it doesn't currently have a discussion of that. I think we went with what was the loudest on the site potentially. So we'll take another look and make sure, and please provide the comment like Mark said, make sure to incorporate that as we make revisions and respond to comments.
And I'll just say too, this is Andrew Bremsef, City of Fergus Falls. Those are the exact type of comments that I would encourage folks to make. I mean, make whatever comments you feel are appropriate or you wish, but those are the types of comments that'll be helpful to the city of Fergus Falls as it looks at the EAW to determine whether or not all of the questions related to the environmental impacts have been addressed in those categories that Otter Tail Power talked about. So if there's something that may be missing, please put that in your written comments so we can consider that and ensure that those things are addressed. The city council will definitely be interested in that type of thing. So thank you for bringing that up.
Okay, thank you. The next we have identified as iPhone, so please unmute your mic.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay, this is Ben Marfell and I'm one of the three property owners that will be, you know, completely surrounded by this project, just off of Main Street. And, you know, just maybe a couple of quick comments, more than questions, is, you know, not only has there just been a ton of concerns addressed tonight, but, you know, just for communication between, you know, some of the property owners and Otter Tail, they've been very good to communicate with, but, you know, we don't seem to get a lot of answers as to, you know, how the impact to property value is going to be, you know, assessed and dealt with. And furthermore, you know, the size of this project is obviously significant. And I visited with a customer of mine who is a landowner in southern Minnesota and they have a large number of small solar facilities down there. And their local electric company there approached them to do a solar project and, you know, they agreed to a 25-year lease on their property. But the electric company would only do a maximum of five acres. And the property owner actually wanted to do more and they said, no, the environmental impacts are too high to do large-scale solar. So, you know, I think that's a big thing that needs to be addressed. And then maybe, you know, some of the issues with concerns with maybe transparency on some of these things with the project, you know, when Otter Tail Power acquired the majority of this land just a few short months ago, you know, that was all done in private with the landowners prior to this project being announced publicly to anyone else. And so, you know, some of those things just throw up red flags to me that there's definite concerns that the public's going to have and this project needs to hurry up and get rolling before those concerns can be addressed and the project, you know, not done. So anyway, just a few comments.
Thank you. We have approximately about five minutes left of this public hearing.
Just a reminder, the, as you can see on the screen, written comments are due by December 30th. That is a 30-day comment period that started on November 30th. Tonight's the public hearing that the city council asked Otter Tail Power and the city to hold. We would really like to have these comments in written form. As Brian mentioned, they can be mailed to him, emailed to the email address on the screen, whichever is most convenient for you. Katie, go ahead, Katie.
Go ahead, Katie.
This is Troy again. There are two partials on this land, the old Buckholz land and the Mark Sanding gravel land. The DNR said, looks like unbroken native Minnesota prairie, which the state recommends not touching. What is Otter Tail's plans for that? I did not see that in the EAW and it looks like, from what I can tell, that the solar panel map shows panels right over the unbroken land.
And there's less than 1% of this biome left in Minnesota, so it is a very protected landscape. Is that something that'll be surveyed and addressed?
So one of the things we do talk about in the EAW is using the state's designation of areas in terms of special habitat areas and those kinds of things. And I'll go back and look to make sure that when we checked, there were no designated areas the state identified. But we'll go back and take another look, especially, and if you could include that comment. We've been out to look at some other areas that were raised as well. And we've also looked at, you know, compared current aerial photographs as well as fieldwork with historic photos as well to take a look at what the land looked like in the 50s and in, I think, the 60s and the late 30s, I think, are when we have some pictures or something like that. So if you can provide that comment, we can look a little bit more and take a look at the databases that we use to make some of the determinations related to native prairie.
Yeah, we'll provide the comment. When the DNR spoke about it, they said that those maps mark out acres of, 40 acres or more, but that doesn't change the unbroken native prairie.
We have approximately time for one short comment.
Hi, my name is Blaine Busev and I live within the, they call it, I guess, a solar island. It's right in the middle of everything. I've been probably living in this property for 18 to 20 years. I've raised all my kids in this property, every tree on this property I planted. I have a lot of... I have a lot of heart and soul invested into this property, and to be totally surrounded by solar panels and my property devaluing the way I assume it's going to devalue, I'm just wondering if that Otter Tail is going to see in their hearts to look into this and if this does go ahead to take care of, I don't even know if it can be done, but to address this, so to speak. And I know my, my neighbor Ben bought this property expecting to probably spend the rest of his life on it. The reason he has it where it is is because he runs a business where he has trucks in and out, and he can't really do that. There are only certain places he could probably find that he could actually do that with in this area. So I'm just, my question is, what's Otter Tail's thoughts on this?
Thank you for the, you know, question, and, and I can certainly appreciate it and tell by tone, and it's, it's, you know, you really are proud of that area. And so, you know, unfortunately, I'm probably not the best person equipped to have this, you know, conversation with you or in this venue. You know, what I can commit to is making sure that we follow up and, and talk through those concerns. And so we'll, we will, we will do that, or I'll commit to make sure that we have someone reach out, you know, soon to have, have a conversation and hear from you. So thank you for that.
All right. Thank you all. It's officially 5:32, excuse me, pardon, thank you, 6:32. This is the official end of the public hearing for the Hoot Lake Solar EAW project. On behalf of the city, we really appreciate the comments and cordial dialogue amongst all of you. Also, just one last reminder, please refer to the screen. Written comments are to be received by December 30th. Please email hootlakesolar shown on the presentation or via email to Brian Uvaro at City Hall. So at this time, once again, we appreciate the dialogue and have a very good night. Thank you.